Okay, we'll start out briefly with our planning commission business. Any report from the staff?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board -- wow, it's loud tonight. Commission, I just wanted to note again that Commissioner Bob Foulter did submit his letter of resignation. That has been accepted by the Board of Supervisors and a notice of vacancy has been posted. The board clerk has not received any new applications based upon that posting. I'll also mention that as a reminder that Commissioner Foulter was your representative to the Board of Supervisors Agricultural Advisory Committee. So if any of you are interested in serving on that committee, we did distribute or I think send you the form to fill out, and that needs to be submitted to the board clerk, and you can also give it to Karen or to me, and we'll make sure the board clerk gets it. So again, I don't know when that position will be filled. I just want to remind the commission that we will have a meeting on August 19th. There are three items. The Blue Mountain Minerals project does, an EIR was prepared for that project, and hopefully you all got a copy of that now. It's a lengthy document. That and the reclamation plan are all, that's thick, so we got that to you ahead of time. So you'll need to, in your deliberations and when you make, take an action on the project, if you decide to recommend, or excuse me, to approve it, you are the decision-making body on that project. You need to find that you have considered the environmental impact report. So I just want to make sure that you have an obligation to be, you know, to review it and be familiar with it.
Is that meeting scheduled?
Yes, that's on the 19th, your next regularly scheduled meeting, six o'clock in the boardroom. We also have a use permit for a cell tower and a rezoning project on that agenda, so it might be a rather lengthy meeting for a change. So I just wanted you to be prepared of that. I don't know if we're going to have a meeting on September 2nd yet or not. It's very possible. We have a couple of projects, we're just waiting for the applicants to agree to conditions. So we could have a meeting on that date as well, and I will know on the 19th. So with that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have to report this evening.
All right, thank you. A question, yeah, John?
Thank you. The 19th of August is one of those days when I'll be in Petaluma. And while I could attend this meeting by phone if necessary, I would not want to put all of you through that difficulty unless necessary. So, does anyone know if they won't make that meeting, if we'll need me for a quorum?
Everybody here?
I'm planning to be.
Okay.
I think we're all here.
Then I think I'll keep you in my hearts and...
Not in your mind, but at least you...
Not so much.
Very tender, John. Any reports from the commissioners?
No.
No reports, okay. Report from the planning committee representative?
I'll report that we have not had a meeting.
Thank you. Any report from, no, the advisory committee, obviously no report because Bob is gone.
I'll just mention there has not been a meeting of that committee either. Right.
Okay. And now the minutes of the meeting of July 1st, I think everybody has an opportunity, opportunity to have studied those. Any corrections or additions? If not, may I have a motion to adopt? Motion, second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so order. Our next item is consideration of approving a response to the findings and recommendations of the 2014 grand jury report regarding this planning commission. Ms. Shane, would you like to lead off on that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At your last meeting, we had just received the grand jury report, and I did give copies of the findings and recommendations of the grand jury to commissioners and asked that if any of you want to provide responses, that you could. Commissioner Lottori did send me comments which have been incorporated into this response, and Commissioner Baker sent a letter to the editor which was published, and some of this reflected in, these comments reflect his as well. So I can go over them individually if you'd like. Does that, do you like to proceed, or so you could discuss them, or?
What's the sense of the commission? We have several choices. One is to go, you know, item by item. The other is just ask for comments rather than go through anything line by line. I kind of favor the last, yeah, Commissioner Ryd.
I wouldn't mind sort of a 10,000-foot overview. I don't know if we need to go line by line. It might help me to know Bev's thinking, and perhaps any of the other commissioners' thoughts. But I don't want to, I don't want that to be translated go line by line.
I could do that quickly.
Okay, and then you want comments at the time or following your overview?
Well, what I'll probably do is go briefly through each finding, and that way if commissioners have comments, I think that probably is a good way to do it, so that way we can make sure that it's on the record that you did consider every finding and every recommendation.
Yeah, you don't, I don't think, need to read the whole thing.
No, I won't be reading it, no.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So you're going to start out with the findings or the recommendations?
The findings.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm just, on the first page, the grand jury had, I believe it was 10 findings and 10 recommendations. So the first finding was that the elimination of the Southern County Planning Commission disenfranchised the Southern County area from the decision-making process. Now, what we are required to do is to respond that we either agree or don't agree, or we partially agree, that type of thing, to each finding. So a response to this one is that we do not agree with this finding, and my summary of what I stated in here was that while we don't, no longer have a area planning commission, that the process and opportunity for submitting comments on projects has not changed. And I outlined the process, that we do early consultation, there's an opportunity to review and comment on environmental documents, there's an opportunity to come to the planning commission meeting or submit comments in writing, and there's an opportunity to go to the board supervisors meetings or submit comments in writing. So there's at least two opportunities, often four opportunities, for public comment, whether you have a commission here or in the South County. And then I also mentioned that this commission can also meet in the South County if there is a need to do that, and that we would do that, you've all said that you would, if there's a project that rises to the level that we would feel that a meeting over there is warranted. So, and I did mention that since the South County Commission was disbanded in 2013, we've only heard six small projects in the Groveland community, well, Groveland, there was one in, like, Don Pedro. So basically, six projects in the South County, none of which were of any controversy or large size. That may change, actually, so we have some things coming up.
I guess if we do this, are you done with it?
Yes, I think this, if he has comment on, in case you want to make changes to that response.
Yeah, okay, let's do it that way.
This is specifically...
Commissioner Baker?
I, I spent a little bit of time doing some informal polling in the area, and the general consensus, I know I'd say the overwhelming consensus, is that people don't have a problem with what has been going on, they have a concern of, you know, a potential problem somewhere down the road, what if, what if, what if, right? And so it is not a, there isn't a beef, if you will, about the process. As they've experienced it, they're just concerned that there's a potential for that beef down the road, and as long as we do everything we say we do here, I think they'll continue to be comfortable with our solution. Now, that's not 100% unanimous amongst the folks, but I'd say it's an 80% response amongst the people that I polled in the area.
Okay. I do have a comment, both on the findings and the recommendation, because when I was on the board, I was always the champion of keeping the local groups together, local planning commissions, rather than centralize it. And I'm the one that's going to have to sign this document...
That's right.
...when it goes out. And I've searched for a way through this wording, some way or other, to try not to be a hypocrite on this thing. I stand by my guns, my original, and I don't know how to do it frankly, so...
Well, I have an idea.
Your reasoning is right on, Bev, and, you know, if I wasn't for an advocate for the other side, I'd say, nice job.
But there is a way to do that.
Okay, tell me.
We can simply say that the majority of the commission does not agree with this finding, and then we can add another paragraph at the bottom and say that, you know, if you want to be named, Chairman Dick Plann, or one commissioner advocated that, or that the...
Historically has advocated.
Well, I, yeah, have, and we can say it however you want, in detail, that as a supervisor, you had always supported area commissions, you have your quote from Thomas Jefferson about the...
Yeah, I think I did.
Yeah, oh yes, I've heard that many times.
Tom said that.
Yes, about the closest, I forget, I forget it now, but...
The closest government was the best government.
Something, yes. I mean, I mean, we can, we can add a paragraph to, and that way when you sign it, you are staying with your principle that you didn't agree with this particular, with the rest of the commission on this particular finding. This is different, we don't, well, I shouldn't say that. The board supervisors always, as a group, has to vote on this type of response as well, as you know, and I don't know if they've ever had a dissenting opinion like that, but we can certainly add a paragraph if you'd like.
Yeah, I don't want to muddy the water, but I just, you know, I felt strongly about it for a long time, and, you know, I think there is another side to this thing, and but anyway, what, is there a sense here on the board, John?
I wanted to make a comment, too. I'd like to ask Ms. Shane to put your lawyer hat on for a second, and tell me, I was interviewed by the grand jury for this purpose, and I, I think I understand that I'm not allowed to talk about that interview, is that correct?
That's correct. In fact, you actually sign a form, confidentiality form.
Am I allowed to comment about the flavor of that interview?
I would, I would recommend to you not.
Okay. Then I'll just be ready to support the response.
And I think, too, Mr. Chairman, we don't say that there shouldn't be a Southern Tuaman County Planning Commission, we're just saying that we feel that your commission and the process still provides an adequate opportunity for people to be involved in planning.
Well, would the board agree to saying the majority of the board, dah 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 dah?
Yes.
I would be fine with that.
Does that bother anybody?
No, that's fine.
I mean, make me feel better.
That is what we're here for. I think that's a thoroughly reasonable solution.
You're saying the large majority of the board...
Six to one, five to one.
But I mean, for what it's worth, if that's, if that's a consensus, we'll direct staff to do that.
Okay, we can certainly do that, yes.
All right, any other comments on South County issue? None? None. Okay, proceed.
The second finding was the grand jury finds that delayed broadcast of planning commission meetings only on cable, Channel 8, does not actively encourage public participation. Jim Garaventa is over here, he films this and he does put it on Channel 8. My response was that we do not agree with this finding, and the rationale here is that the planning commission's purview is land use, and the decisions that you make are of interest to people who are affected by those decisions, such as a project in your neighborhood, or on your street, or something like that, so that it's not a broad-based appeal, so that, while we certainly, I certainly don't disagree that we could do more, the fact that it does not actively encourage public participation, I don't, I just don't think that's true. I don't think that there, if we did a lot more, there'd be much more interest, I guess that's the way, and that's what this says.
Okay, any comments?
I do have a comment. In Calvers County, not to make Jim's life harder, they do broadcast it on YouTube as an external link that people can watch, but to be fair, the ones that I see, it's, unless it's controversial, it's like 10 views, so...
It's still not real time, correct?
It's still not real time, but it is after the fact that Ed Lark does post it on YouTube, onto YouTube.
So it's on demand?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Anything else? Peter?
I believe, looking at the thing in the back, even the board of supervisors isn't live, right?
Yes, they are now.
Oh, it isn't?
Yeah, on Granicus, they are now live.
Okay, so that's a recent change?
Yes.
Okay. No comment?
Okay, all right, go ahead with it, go ahead.
Okay, the third finding was the grand jury finds that not having archived meetings available for the public to view on the county website results in less public participation. Now, as Commissioner Ryd has said, the board of supervisors in the last two years switched over to a Granicus, which is a software program, and there is live streaming. That program also allows for archiving all of these videos. So, right now, we do not use that, and we'll get into that in the recommendations, but the fact is, we have never had much interest from the public to come in and look at, we have audio tapes, we've had audio tapes ever since we've had a planning commission, we have written minutes that are posted on the county's website. Frankly, having old planning commission hearings available and archived at this point, I don't think that that will be a great advantage. If people are really interested in a topic, they can come and go through old files, go through the written minutes, and that type of thing, I mean, our experience is, we just don't see that level of interest to warrant going through the process of actually posting these old meetings on the website.
Okay, any comments?
Yes, but do people come into the office and ask for archived audio and...
No, that's what I'm saying. We just, we just don't see the interest. And if it's, if it's a controversial project, and it's usually a large project that's going to end up in a lawsuit, there's a tremendous amount of interest, and we have people ahead of the meeting saying, I want, I want a tape, it used to be a tape, now it's a disc of the minutes, or the, you know, the actual audio.
Yes.
And now they've got the video they could actually get from Channel 8 and do, yeah. But again, how often do people do that?
Not often.
It's, it's been a couple of years. We haven't had a controversial project in quite some time, so...
Okay.
Thank you.
I think that's an adequate response.
Okay, continue on.
Okay, finding four is the grand jury finds that interactive planning commission meetings may have a positive effect on public participation, and my response is, I, that we agree with this finding. Now, again, this is, the finding is, it may have a positive effect, okay? Yeah, okay? And under finding five, the grand jury finds that procedures currently used by the planning commission for giving notice of upcoming meetings is the minimum required by the Brown Act. And my response here is, we do not agree with this finding. The Brown Act only requires a three-day, 72-hour notice. We're required as planning items under the California Government Code to give a minimum 10-day notice. We go well beyond the Brown Act and the notification requirements that we are subject to for planning projects. So it's a 10-day notice, it's published in the newspaper, we send actually mail notices to property owners within a specified distance. Our distance is, depending on the project, is as much as or greater than the California Government Code requires. So I, you know, we, we go well beyond the Brown Act.
Okay, comments?
The only thing I would, would question on that, and I don't really have a problem with the response, but is that occasionally, infrequently, we have people coming in and say, gee, I just didn't know until the last minute. Now, I suspect that 90% of the time it's because they didn't open their mail, or, but sometimes it's because the ownership of the property was, you know, it had multiple people and only one person got it, and there was technicalities that caused people to not be notified when it would have been good for them to be notified.
And that's true.
And, and so, you know, it's a little different than saying whether or not we meet the Brown Act technically, I think that's correct, but in the spirit of this, is there, you know, is there more that we should be doing, and maybe that's on the response side, is there more that we should be doing in order to solve that very occasional problem? You know, once is too many in terms of that, so I don't, I don't know exactly what I'm suggesting we do there, but I think it should be recognized as a mission.
Well, all your meeting agendas are posted on the county's website, so people who are interested can be checking that, and again, it's posted 10 days before the meetings. The issue you brought up is a real one, because we are required, it's usually the mail notices, you know, we don't, can't oversee the post office, some things don't get delivered, you're right, and there are often multiple owners. We are only required to send it to the person listed on the current assessment roll. So if one owner's down in San Jose and the other one's up here, and the bill goes to San Jose, there's really nothing we can do about that. I think what I, what I think happens is that people who are outside the notification area then hear from a neighbor, and because they're outside, they don't get a direct notice unless they have requested to be notified. And we do maintain lists of, very general, people want to be notified of anything in the Groveland area, or they want to be notified of all the discount stores that are proposed, or what, I mean, we have all these lists for notification. I believe we go well beyond, above and beyond the call of duty. At some point, you just have to say, this is what the law requires. If we meet the law, then you also can't be challenged that, well, how come you gave more notice on this project? And developers said that, why would you go, don't go beyond that boundary, because that's what the law says, it's 1,000 feet or 500, whatever it may be, you go beyond that because, you know, oh, other people might be interested, stick with the law.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, finding six is the grand jury finds that at three meetings it attended, there were insufficient numbers of agendas available to the public. And I respond that we do not agree with this finding, that there are always copies on the back table, we have access to a photocopy machine, most people, if there isn't a copy, will ask, and the clerical staff will go make more copies. So I, I have never heard that complaint before, so I was actually quite surprised when I heard this.
Yeah, okay, anybody? Okay.
And we've actually started, instead of, we had five minimum before, now we're making it 10 minimum, and so just to make sure that there are adequate copies, that's of course an additional cost to the county, so...
The one thing that could be done is we could say, if you can't get a copy, we'll make you a copy, so they don't have to ask for one, we can tell them that they have...
That's true, and that...
It would just be a process for us to...
That might actually be a very good idea at the beginning of the meeting, to say, does everyone have a copy of the agenda? If not, you know, show of hands of those, and we could go make more copies. Yeah, that's probably a very good change to the procedure, yeah.
They're not sure.
Yes, and that's what, we've always, it's a five minimum, but we often have a huge stack if we anticipate a big crowd, yeah, yeah.
Okay, go ahead, seven?
Seven is the grand jury finds that asking persons wishing to offer public comment to identify themselves in any manner is a violation of the Brown Act, and we say we agree. Finding eight is the grand jury finds that all public officials are required to attend ethics training, and we agree with that. Grand jury finds that a three-minute time limit for public comment, although legal, is sometimes unreasonable and reflects neither the intent of the Brown Act nor the opinion of the California Attorney General. And my response there is that we agree that three-minute time limit may be unreasonable for some development projects, but that it may be reasonable for others. And then I explain the factors that your commission takes into consideration when you decide whether or not to set time limits initially, and then what that time limit will be. And yes, we do use three minutes occasionally, and sometimes it's five, and sometimes it's been a lot more than that, so it just varies depending on the project.
Any comment? Okay, go ahead.
Finding 10 is the grand jury finds that having someone sit near the lectern and wave a sign indicating the timing for public comment is unreasonable.
That's an unreasonable comment.
Well, and I said we don't agree, and explained, you know, why we do that, and that was, again, a very interesting comment, I thought.
As a, as a retired member of the electronics industry, I think we need to bring more technology in the room, so you have to have the old light, because maybe I'll benefit from that.
Okay, any comments? Okay, seeing that.
Okay, now the recommendations.
Well, I tell you, well, let's do, let's just...
Table this.
Set that a table for a few, hopefully a few minutes, and get to these gentlemen and their issue, because this may...
Take a while.
...not be exactly what they came here to hear, so...
Let's do it all. It's very interesting.
Oh, gosh.
Let's take care, let's take care of their business, yeah.
Thank you. May I just comment on the number of agendas? If indeed we change procedurally and ask people to indicate if they have no agenda, could we avoid printing 10 copies instead of five? I, I'm looking for cost savings there. Would that, could we do that?
Yeah, I think we could do that, yes.
Yes, okay. I would like to recommend that.
We don't need 10 copies.
Throwing them out.
10s would be a bit much.
Yeah.
Well...
But that's the problem, you don't, you don't know, and I, you know, and I think that's...
Thank you.
When they happen to come, I guess we had a few more people here, but...
Okay, let's go, let's table that for now, and we'll open, really, the public hearing. Start with, public comment is invited, anybody may speak on any item that's not on the agenda, if anybody, I don't see anybody wants to do that. So with that, we will now go to the item of discussion tonight, the Ross Finical?
Yeah, just do Ross, that's okay.
Ross, how do you say it?
You did it right.
Pretty good, okay. Ross Finical project, that's an ordinance for a zone change and a conditional use permit. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Christopher and Mildred Ross own property at 24635 State Highway 108 and 20162 Chief Fuller Way in Meewook Village. The site is currently used for the sale of used furniture, and what they are interested in doing is to expand the business by constructing three new buildings, one that would be 2,000, approximately 2,000 square feet, one 1,600 square feet, and one 1,800 feet, and also to have an outdoor storage area approved through a conditional use permit. The project site is currently developed with a 5,000-square-foot building and a 1,400-square-foot building, and then the rest of the property is primarily covered with asphalt and used for the sale of the furniture and also outdoor storage. They, this started out as a zoning violation, we have been working with the Rosses to get this property into compliance. They, again, also would like to do an expansion, and you will note that the buildings that they're proposing will be cargo containers, or storage containers, that will be bolted together to create buildings, and they will be on foundations, they will be attached to the ground, they will serve like any other building, it's just that they will basically be reused cargo containers. The containers were previously on the site, some of them were, they did move them off the site, they are now on property that I believe is owned by Caltrans, under agreement with Caltrans, and so those are the units they wish to bring back to the site, and they will get a building permit, they will make sure that they meet code, have all the fire protection requirements, and the other thing to note about this particular site, because it is along the highway, and the reason that aerial photograph was handed out tonight, because we didn't have one in your package, is you'll note that there's a lot of natural vegetation between where they want to develop and the highway, so there's a lot of natural screening. There is a condition of approval that's proposed that would require that they submit a landscape plan, so that we can ensure that there is landscaping that would create somewhat of a buffer between the highway and the project itself. In order for them to perceive their project, you're asking your commission this evening to support rezoning of the property from general commercial to special commercial, which is consistent with their special commercial general plan land use designation, and they are asking your support to approve as a decision-making body a conditional use permit that would allow them to construct the new buildings and have the outdoor storage area.
Any questions of staff? Okay, with that, let's open the public hearing, and the way we run this, gentlemen, is those in favor speak first, those opposed speak second, and anybody who wants to speak neutrally speaks third, and there's opportunity for rebuttal and surrebuttal. So anybody who would like to speak in favor of this project is welcome to come forward and address the commission. Okay, if there's no takers, okay. Anybody wish to speak in opposition to this project? Nobody? Anybody wish to speak neutrally? Nobody? With that, this matter comes back to the commission for discussion and action. Let's see, I have, I had a question, Ms. Shane, cargo containers, you know, there's all kinds of cargo, some of them have Japanese lettering on them, and some of them have got English, and, you know, some are beat up and some aren't. Is there anything in there about, for example, painting?
Paint.
Painting them the same color?
Yes.
I missed it.
Yes.
That would make a big difference if they were kind of matching.
The condition number 56.
Okay, I missed that one.
That would require that they be earth tones and soft shades that will blend with That would require that they be earth tones and soft shades that will blend with the natural surroundings. Bright colors and reflective surface shall be avoided. They are tan right now, and I don't recall that any of them had wording on the outside that-
Okay.
-at this time. They may, you can't see the sides, but if you look at the picture on page five, gives you a good idea of what they looked like.
Okay. Yeah, because you see them going down the road on a truck-
Yes.
-toward the porch, and there's all kinds of different things on the sides of these things, but you're, guys, they're all going to blend in so good. Okay. Shirley?
Mr. Chairman, I think the color noted in our preparation materials is light yellow.
That's what the agenda report says.
Oh, because the, the condition actually says earth tones. Does it say that's what the existing color is?
Yeah.
I think so.
Yeah, yeah.
But the color will be changed to something more earth tone. One more question. Accordingly, our chairman has mentioned the differences in these cargo containers. Some are all full of dense and look unattractive, perhaps because of that. I'm hoping these are not in that kind of condition. They are not.
Are you talking directly to me?
I'm talking to whoever can answer that question.
I can answer the question.
Could you get to the podium now?
You have to come up. You've been asked a question, and now you can respond.
Hi, I'm Christopher Ross. I'm the owner of the property.
Thank you.
So the cargo containers in question, there's one correction I'd like to make. She's calling them cargo containers. We are actually technically calling them building components, because they will no longer be portable, they'll be permanently installed.
I knew that.
So we'd like the language to switch, it probably is, to read building component versus cargo container. Cargo container gives you the impression that it's something that can be moved. So these will be on a foundation-
Yes.
-will be permanently bolted down. They are color matched, or the ones that aren't color matched will be color matched to our existing two warehouses that are already on the property. And my, my understanding from my discussion with Alex is, as long as they're color matched and they're, you know, nothing bright, they have no descriptions on the side, no lettering or anything like that, that that's exactly what you're looking for. And I'd like to reemphasize what Bev said about the screening. There is, on Highway 108, there is a existing fence that has screening in it. There's vegetation on the outside, which is the, our property plus Caltrans property, and then on the inside of that fence, which is all our property, vegetation to screen these things. Attached to our full set of plans is a couple of photographs from World Life Church and from the highway 108 out there, to kind of show that when looking from that direction, you virtually don't even see the containers. We parked during the pictures, a couple of trucks that were 10 feet tall. Our project is only 8 feet 6 tall, and you could not see the trucks with those pictures that we provided at the very end of our, that Bev's looking at right now.
That's page 24 in your staff report.
So, one, to ease your fears, you virtually can't see the project from the highway, and two, when you do enter the facility, the project colors are very light tones, and they match the existing warehouse, which has been there for, you know, 20 years with, probably longer than that, without any complaints of any wild colors, and there's no signage at all on them. Half of those containers, we bought brand new, so they don't have dings and dents and everyone's. And the other 10 units that we bought used were all repainted to match our warehouse. So I hope that answers your question.
That's helpful. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
As long as I'm up here, is there anything else? Any other concerns?
Is there another question? Peter?
Are these to be, you're not like doing doors or windows or anything, there's going to be the typical end-opening doors where you-
Yes.
...store things in there, and that's kind of how it works.
Yeah, and the purpose of this expansion is for us to have additional inventory space for our existing office furniture business that we have there now.
So it's storage?
It's storage for us.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Another question.
I don't know if this is for Bev or for you, is, on conditions 46 and 47, we're talking about building and safety, is the public using this to shop for furniture? So is the public going into your storage?
They are not. It is basically storage for us, so that we can put our surplus inventory. I buy inventory sometimes in large quantities. The county would prefer that I don't stage it, which is why they gave me a minimum timeframe for staging out in my parking lot. Don't stage it out in the parking lot. This way I have, you know, covered inside storage to put that inventory when it comes in, and then it flows from there into our warehouse. And so that's basically what all this expansion is about. Okay?
Okay. All right. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question for Bev.
Yeah. Go ahead.
On item number, on condition number nine, it says submit a landscape plan to planning division. It sounds like this is going to be one of those cases where there's not a lot going, the landscape plan is going to be pretty much as is, or what's going, what needs to be submitted to you in a landscape plan before you're satisfied with condition number nine?
You're right. They need to demonstrate that they aren't going to remove a lot of vegetation, that what they are going to keep, or if they are going to supplement it. And that way we can check to make sure that it's water-efficient landscape if they are going to plan anything new. I don't foresee that, because they do have all, so much natural vegetation.
Okay.
Okay. Another discussion? Oh, yeah, John.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight, we have a small number of responses from adjourners, and there's one notable one from a Sherri Burkstrand, who is a neighbor to the project. She wrote a rather long and impassioned plea that we not allow it, and her main reason seems to be that she thinks it would be unattractive. I just wanted to state for the record that I read her response and considered it, and I hope that when the project is complete, that she will be pleased to find that it's not actually going to be a negative for the neighborhood.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, Cole.
If we're all ready, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a recommendation to approve a zone change RZ 13-005, based on findings A through D, and recommend approval of conditional use permit CUP 14-009, based on the following conditions, 1 through 59 and A through F.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Yes.
We have motion second. Commissioner Ry. Further discussion? Then I'll call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Repose. Abstain. So ordered on a unanimous basis.
Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
I close that one. Okay, guys. You can stay or not stay.
Stick around for a civics, if you're honest.
Yes, but I think we'll go for a cocktail.
Good thought. Okay, well, let's get, get back now to the recommendations.
So can we determine that since participation is an issue, if we had more cocktails here, participation is- Forty years ago, that might have-
That might actually have been not too far wrong.
Okay, we will now go to the recommendations, grand jury recommendations, found on page four, and we will start with R1.
The first recommendation is the grand jury recommends that no later than December 31st of 2016, the board reinstate the Southern County Planning Commission. And our response is simply that, and this, and the responses to the recommendations are either that it has been implemented, or it hasn't, or whether it's going to be, or if it's partially been, and that type of thing. That's the type of response you have to give. So the first is that this recommendation has not been implemented, and we simply state that the board could reinstate the Southern Topeka County Planning Commission. The last part of the grand jury's recommendation is that the South County Commission would serve as an advisory body to your commission. And then I explain that under the California Government Code, that is not possible, that a planning commission is a planning commission, and it would have the same authority as your commission. So this is just providing facts, you know, no opinion here, just saying the board could do it, and this would be the situation if they did.
Peter?
So even if the board did decide they wanted to rehab it, was it advisory in the past? My understanding was it was not, right?
No, no.
Each of the three were independent of this body?
That's right.
So you wouldn't be recreating the same thing? You could recreate the same as before, but you couldn't recreate something that didn't exist, which was them being advisory?
It couldn't be a planning commission.
And call it that?
Yeah, they could, they could have a planning committee over there.
You could call it something else.
The way Twain Hart used to and Topeka used to.
Right, okay.
But it could not be a planning commission.
I follow you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments on that one?
Is there, is there any opportunity for us to recommend that this gets reviewed in a year, or two years, or something like that, to ameliorate the concern that while we don't have a problem now, what happens if we're not being represented well down the road? Is there ability for us to put that into our recommendation that we suggest?
To the grand jury? The grand-
Not necessarily the grand jury, to the supervisors or to ourselves, as to whether or not we still believe this is the right answer, here from now.
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put it in this, because you're responding to the grand jury, and the grand jury actually does follow-ups.
Okay.
Periodically. They'll pull out findings and recommendations from a year, two years ago, and they'll, you know, randomly go through them and decide to do some follow-up. Nothing prevents this commission from advising the board that you would like them to, you know, make a request to them to look into this or that. So that would be up to your commission, if you want me to send a memo to them saying, oh, the planning commission voted to request that you review this or something. That's-
My opinion is this is a problem, this is a solution looking for a problem. You know, we don't have an issue right now, and therefore, to spend any energy on it right now is a waste of time.
Okay.
However, the concern I have from the constituents in the area is that, well, not now, but what happens when, you're not representing us anymore, Jerry, and, and we don't have the, the coverage that we want, and the people don't want to listen to us. So if there's anything we could do around that that would soften it, I'm not married to it, that we need to do that for me to these supporters.
Mr. Chair. Well, I would think that would almost have to be an agenda item on our agenda.
Yes, yes.
I don't think that's something we could do tonight.
No.
And if you want that done, Jerry, do it, or have staff do it.
Right, right.
You know, we can deal with it when it's a regular agenda item.
But I, I do think if the board supervisors is getting complaints from that community, or like Tom Peter, that they're underrepresented, underrepresented, then the board will deal with that. I, I don't believe that's the case now either. Supervisor Gray, who was a Southern Topeka County Planning Commissioner for many years before he ran for supervisor, is very supportive of area commissions, and he hasn't indicated that he's hearing that in his community at this point, so.
Okay. Anything else on R1? If not, R2?
R2, the grand jury recommends that by December 31st, the planning commission broadcasts its meetings live on the internet. And the response is this recommendation has not been implemented, and then I explain that the board supervisors does currently use the Grand Cas program to broadcast, and if they make that available to the planning commission, then we certainly will do that.
Okay. Comment?
That's fair.
Yeah.
Reasonable?
Possible.
Okay. R3?
There's a cost. That's one reason we haven't done it. The grand jury recommends that by December 31st of 2016, the board supervisors direct the planning commission to have video of past meetings posted on the county website. And the response is this recommendation has not been implemented. Then I go on further to say that if the board does authorize us to use the live streaming, then that will, from then on, automatically archive all of the meetings, and that basically I don't see a reason to go back to do the old ones.
Well, yeah, that recommendation is the board of supervisors.
That's right.
Really, not to us.
That's right. Almost all of these are really to the board.
Yeah, okay.
I would the board.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. R4?
R4 is the grand jury recommends that by December 31st of 2016, planning commission meetings be broadcast with interactive capability. And the response is that this recommendation has not been implemented, and that the board supervisors' meetings are broadcast through Grand Cas, but they are not interactive at this time, and that this will be a public policy issue, that the board will have to decide how they would provide for interactivity, as well as a technical issue, how it will be done, what kind of software, and are there costs involved? So basically, then we go on to say, if the board does begin an interactive meeting program, then the planning commission could incorporate that into our procedure as well.
I think we, a couple of questions.
Yeah. Peter?
Would the Brown Act still require that if you had an interactive capability, that it would need to be noticed at that alternative location? I'm, I'm sitting in my living room, and I want to interact with the meeting. Now, we have to post that, don't we?
I don't, no, that's, I don't think so, because the people commenting from their homes aren't the decision-making body.
As long as they're not a decision-maker.
Yes, you as a commissioner, if you're somewhere else wanting to participate.
I see the difference.
Yes. That way someone can come and watch you participate.
So it would just be the ability to interact live from some remote location?
That's right. If you're at home, and you're watching it over the internet, and you want to type in a comment, then you would be able to do that.
Is there an example of this being done?
I'm not, I'm not aware of any, but I, I wouldn't be surprised if it's done in some of the larger jurisdictions. I don't know if counties have been doing it for planning items or not. It, it does raise several, again, public policy questions, because how would you respond? If, you know, you get an email, I guess like a letter, then the, during, a public hearing, you're asking, who's in favor? You get comments through the internet, and then the opponents would respond or be able to comment on those, and then, you know, it could really protract your meetings, which not, nothing that there's wrong with that, but it would, you'd have to really look at the process to make sure that it's fair to everyone participating.
Yeah. How do you rebut or anything? Sure rebut or anything?
I think this is ripe with unintended consequences.
Well, that, that's just it.
And, you know, if there's somebody else that wants to go out and figure out how to work all through that in Santa Cruz County or something, how's that first? And then it turns out to be a great idea, we can go line up behind them, but just to be at the front of that spear doesn't sound like a good idea to me.
Even something that we haven't done yet, the county, many jurisdictions have embraced social media, you know, Twitter and that type of thing, and they broadcast information out and will accept comments over it. Well, there again, you have to be very careful, because on a planning item, for example, we would have to have all those comments and then be able to forward them to you, or again, you'd get a paper copy with all that, just like any other comment. And often, because it's very short, you don't really get the whole meaning of what people are trying to say. So it's, it's, there are other, planning directors in other counties have said, don't do it, because they, just as you're saying, it, it's ripe with problems that sounds good in theory, but again, from a public process, it can complicate it significantly.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm just wondering if we should, semantics, should change a word here. It says in our response, if the board of supervisors implements an interactive meeting program, the planning commission would. How about could instead of would?
Oh, well, the reason I use would is kind of making commitment that we would do that. If the board's doing it, there'd be really no reason for, and we had the same program to use. That's the only thing I was getting at.
Oh, okay, okay.
I tend to agree. I mean, theoretically, the board could direct this, or they could say, we're only going to do it for board meetings.
Yes.
That's true, they could. Well, we could, it's fine with me if you want, you want could instead of would.
We might, but maybe they don't want us to.
That's true.
Maybe there's not enough money, or, I don't know.
All right, anything else on that, John?
Well, how many recommendations are there?
Ten.
There are ten.
I guess I'll wait till the end of ten to give mine. I want to have an overview comment.
Sure, good, then. Okay.
Okay, we're on five. Grand jury recommends that by December 31st, 2015, this year, the planning commission post-notice in the community calendar section of the local newspaper, public libraries, all county post offices, by mail to local senior centers, and it's live broadcast when they become available. And my response is that this recommendation has been partially implemented, that we do post our notices in the community calendar, and we otherwise post in mail as required by state law and our county ordinance.
Can I ask a comment?
Do we have a social media presence at all? Is there a Tualamook County Facebook page or something?
There, there's not actually a Facebook page. On the county's website, there is Facebook for, I think we can post things, but we, it only works one way, goes out and not in. We don't accept.
I think this is a case where we could use some technology that would probably be relatively easy, if we just said, okay, we're going to post all of our meetings on Facebook. If you want to know about everything, you just have to like us, and it'll all show up, right? And so, it would be a relatively low-cost solution for us to use some, some social media solutions for, for notification.
Except, we don't need to with our county website. You can go on and request to be notified. We have that feature, so.
I understand, it's just friendlier for the people that, you know, that just, you know, with one click, they get everything that's going on with the thing. And I think, and I don't want to, you're right, there's overarching things for us to be talking about here as well, but the overarching issue is we don't have the participation we want. The grand jury came up with a bunch of ideas about what we should do about that. I frankly think they're wrong on most of those ideas. But I think the problem is a real problem, that we don't have the participation we want. So is there other things that we could be doing that maybe fit into this recommendation to get the participation up?
Mr. Chair.
Peter?
I tend to agree, and while I am not a Facebook person, if I ask my kids where they would learn about things, the younger they are, no offense to Cole, but I suspect he's one of the people that would be similar, that's where they find things these days. I don't think, I almost sense they think websites are obsolete. It's a changing of the way technology works, and I was impressed recently in my last employment with how well Facebook does work as a way to get messages out in emergencies. So I kind of got transformed in my thinking, so I think it is a way.
Well, the recommendation from the grand jury doesn't speak to that.
True.
If we're responding to their recommendations, not to something that's bigger and better like Jerry and Peter bring up, am I not right in that? We are responding to what they say.
That's true. I mean, if you wanted to say, and the commission will look into other avenues of notifications such as social media, I don't think there's a problem adding that sentence. It's going a little beyond, but basically, we're saying, you know, we're doing enough here, but maybe we need to do something else besides put it in the library.
Well, there's the letter of what they've requested, and there's a spirit of what they've requested.
Yeah, yeah.
The letter of what they're requesting, saying, you need to post it here, 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 and here. The spirit of it is, you're not getting the message out. So what I'm suggesting is respond to the spirit, not the letter.
So, okay, how are we going to deal with this? Want to add another, I didn't do it yet, John?
No, actually, I'd like to try to put the brakes on that, before we pursue that any further, because I don't agree with Commissioner Baker that we have inadequate participation. I think we currently, and historically, have had the amount of participation that's appropriate by people who are interested. And if people are interested enough to participate, I don't think that's a problem. I don't think we need to try to gin up interest in what we do. If the interest is there, they come. If they're not interested, I don't think it's our obligation to try to create an interest.
All right. Back to the, the recommendation and back to the response. The way it's structured now, is that acceptable or not?
Yes, it is acceptable.
If we want to go beyond that, again, it could be something we could agendize at a later time.
I can live with it.
Okay? All right, let's go to six.
Sixth recommendation was that, beginning with the next meeting, the planning commission makes sure that there are sufficient number of agendas available to the public. So, because we had started using ten, if we're now going to go back to a minimum of five, I could change that if you want. I can add that the chair will be asking the public if they have copies before they start a meeting, so we can add a sentence.
Yeah, don't even need to get locked into the number, I don't think. Appropriate, appropriate number of copies will be provided, or something like that.
We just want to avoid being wasted.
Okay.
Exactly. Any other comments on that? Okay.
Okay, so we'll be changing that one. Recommendation seven is that the planning commission immediately and permanently stop this practice and adhere to the Brown Act. That's referring to asking people to identify themselves, and, and I do the mea culpa here, is that this recommendation has been implemented, and they went to the little history of when that was brought to our attention, and that you did adopt the commitment to not do it again, so.
That's old news, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
Recommendation eight is the grand jury recommends that all planning commission members complete the required ethics training. And then I respond that this has been implemented, and talk a little bit about the AB 1234 ethics training that's required, and mention that four of our commissioners have taken the training in 2014, and their certificates have been sent to the board, and that our newer commissioners will be taking it this fall.
Okay, any comments? Okay, eight or nine?
The ninth one is that the grand jury recommends that time limits for public comment must be reasonable, and thus adjusted upwards to five minutes or more, when necessary. And then I just respond that we do, this has been implemented, that you do take into account the number of people and all that kind of thing, and that you do provide for reasonable amount of time.
Any comments?
I think that's good.
Yeah, you can say an awful lot in three minutes, really. We've heard a lot in three minutes.
Sometimes three minutes is awfully long.
Yeah, if you really say on, say on point.
That's a very good point.
Well, it is, I know, it's, people can get their point across in three minutes, if they are.
And the fact that you consider the number of people that want to speak is really opposite, because if there's a lot of people who want to speak, it's really a hot issue, and then maybe they deserve five minutes. But we kind of have the reverse. If there's a lot of people, it's three minutes, but that's, logistically, that's the only practical way to run this meeting that I can see. So it's kind of an interesting situation. But I don't know, we can be reasonable, yeah. Anybody think three minutes?
I think what we have, I think what we have works just fine, and I think that your concern about the three minutes, generally when you have a lot of people, they're all saying the same thing.
Oh, absolutely.
That's, that's too, but there's an awful lot of duplication. So hearing ten people say the same thing, three minutes at a time.
Ninety percent.
You know, is not particularly.
But you can't be critical of that, because that's still a right to speak.
It's their opportunity, exactly. The, the bigger problem, I think, is when we forget to do that at the beginning, and one person talks for 15 minutes, and now you're stuck.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, you got to.
But that's our problem.
Yes, that's right.
You got to have everybody treated the same.
That's right.
Okay.
Okay, the last recommendation is that the grand jury recommends that the planning commission immediately stop this procedure, instead use the green, yellow, and red light system. This is the staff waving the flag right there. And I, I say that the recommendation has not been implemented, that we don't currently have that equipment to have a stoplight. However, if the board does install it, then we will use it.
To take that serious, you know, we all kind of making light of that, the problem that does occur is when somebody's there focused on us, talking to us about something, and somebody's waving something over here that you only got three minutes.
I agree, it's a distraction.
Sometimes you have to kick them in the shins to be able to say, hey, wait a minute, you only got three minutes. And, and so that, that is, you know, not perfect.
And you're right, because we have seven commissioners, when the board limits speaking staff, either county, usually the county administrator who's sitting right there, you're right, because it's a line of sight. Here, we're over to the side, and there's really not another way to do that.
Well, we ought to do it.
Well, that would, we could, but I really don't think the chair should be there with the cards.
When I'm not chairman anymore, give it to the chairman, let him do it.
Actually, Mr. Chair, we, I believe we already have a solution implement, being implemented to that potential problem. What I have seen in the past, only two or three times, when the speaker did not notice that his time was up, the chair eventually said, your time is up, just finish that sentence.
Yeah.
I don't think we have a problem.
And I think we're quite fair. I do.
See, the only thing I can say is, having been involved in a couple of things in other counties recently, I have actually seen that. It is a nice system, I think it's like the Cadillac way to do it.
Yeah.
But it's often like right here, and it's within everyone's line of sight, you can see it. But I don't think that that convenience justifies the cost necessarily. You know, you've got problems funding what you need to do now.
That's right, I mean, this is the poor man's system.
It, it works.
Anything else on ten? I don't see anything else that we need to do on. Okay, now, Commissioner Latori.
Well, I want to comment, first of all, that I really think the staff did a wonderful job of preparing the responses. I agree, I agree with the responses wholeheartedly, and I'm ready to approve it. I also want to comment that I totally agree with Commissioner Baker's comment, that there's a feeling for me that they set out to find a solution to a problem that doesn't exist. I feel very strongly that. Having said that, for responses one through four, to recommendations one through four, they have a similarity in flavor in that, in my view, they sound like, we don't currently do that, but we would do that if the board of supervisors determines that it needs to be done. And that's fine as far as it goes, but because it's about this body, I'm wondering if we shouldn't actually make a recommendation, what we think, whether it should or should not be done. We're not doing that, recommend to the board, because I think the board is going to be looking to our response to see if we think there should be a change.
Because they actually have the draft responses, too.
And since I feel very strongly that we, that we don't need to make a change, I'd like to recommend that some wording along the lines of, we're not currently doing it, we would be happy to implement that if the board decides there's a need. That's what I think we're not saying, is that there's no need.
So you would go one step further?
Just a slight, you know.
If I could build on that a little bit.
Go ahead.
The, a little bit of the flavor is there, gee, this might be a good idea, but we're broke, right? And, and so we have to compromise. And that's not, that's not our feeling at all. We feel like we're doing a pretty good job of this.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and so, even if you handed us a pile of money, we probably still wouldn't go off and do this live, because that's, because we think we're doing it the right way now.
I just put that money in my pocket.
It could, yeah. So I guess the, so I'm agreeing with you. I think that there probably is room for us to have a dialogue about whether or not we think, whether or not this is the right forum for it or not, I don't know. This whole participation thing, should we, you know, I understand your point, respect it, but should, but so much of it is built around participation. In fact, almost all of this is built around participation. You know, if you think about the South County thing, it's built around participation. Most of these recommendations are built around participation, and they feel the gist of the, of the recommendation is, you guys are sitting up here on Ivory Tower making your decisions and not giving people enough, enough chance for input.
Can I comment on just that part?
Sure.
To try to maybe clarify what I said earlier, I, I have the feeling that the grand jury report is asking us to find a way to increase participation. I think our obligation that we meet very well is to welcome participation.
I think that's an excellent statement.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree with that. I agree with that. If, if there's any barriers that we're creating to participation, we need to tear those down.
Right.
Right?
I agree.
However, no, it's not our job to go out there and find evidence.
No, of course not.
I agree with, we're, we're of the same mind.
If indeed, participation is an issue in good conscience we're concerned with, we should agendize it and discuss it as a commission.
Agreed.
Again, I say, I'm not sure that type of thing belongs in a response to a specific recommendation by the grand jury. I'd much rather see it kept clean, we are responding. Now, some of these other issues, you know, to do our job right, they probably, they need to be discussed, win, lose, or draw.
So I would concur. Sorry, so I'm hoping to discuss my idea that although everything we said is accurate, we left out the idea that we don't think there's a problem, if that's the way we all feel. And I'd like to address that by saying something like, we could do that if the board decides that there's a problem that needs to be addressed.
On each of these?
Some, maybe some overview. Is there a summary at the end?
Well, remember, this is, this is our response to the grand jury. Now, there could be a cover letter to the board of supervisors when we submit it to them, right?
Well, actually, this, this will go directly to Judge Seggerstrom.
Right.
It will also go to the board, and so that they can review it, and actually, the county administrator will use a lot of this in writing the response, the board's response to these same issues. That's what I'm saying, if you want to send something to the board, then it would probably be a memo saying that, you know, this grand jury report raised some issues that we will discuss or have discussed, and we recommend X, Y, and Z. I really think Grandicus is going to be coming soon to your commission. The cost, we're getting some more information, it was quoted as like $15,000 two years ago, and we certainly didn't have the money for that. But now, apparently, they're saying that we didn't have to pay for an extra license, it's just several thousands of dollars for a few things that have to be done. So if that's the case, that may be funded, and you may be doing live streaming soon. So, that's why I'm saying, if the board basically says, go ahead and do it, we will do that. If, if you want to make a statement, I could probably fit it in here somewhere, either under the finding about, you know, what we're doing is not encouraging public participation, I think Commissioner Latori's comment is, it's not our job to encourage participation, it's to welcome it. I really like that what you said.
I do, too.
And if we can fit that in, maybe that's a better place to put it, is actually put it right here to the grand jury, saying, you know, they may not think it's enough, but that's not our job. Our job is to be responsive and to welcome the people who do come, and make sure that they, we listen to them.
I'd like to ask for clarification.
Peter, I have Peter next.
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna say, I, like where Beth is going there, and I think John's comment is well-taken, the idea is, we're open to encouraging participation, we want more participation. We're just not sure that some of the recommendations of the grand jury are the ones that we would all agree are going to achieve that goal, but that we would be more than willing to entertain, or consider, or discuss, or agendize, whatever the right word is, any idea that would encourage participation. So you're sort of giving them the message, you know, we agree with you, we just might have a different outlook on how to, how to do that.
I'd take exception. I think what we were saying is, we don't agree with them.
No, that we don't agree with what they're saying.
But the, but the position that I feel like we've been coming around to here is that we don't agree that it's our job to encourage participation, and yet the grand jury report kind of makes it our job to encourage it. So if we don't agree, we should say, we don't agree.
But you don't want to discourage it, I guess.
We don't want to discourage it, we want to welcome it.
Okay, that's a different, different way to say the same thing.
I particularly like that statement.
John, your name?
Thank you. Ms. Shane, did I hear you correctly that what we're considering here goes to the grand jury, but there will be a separate memo from us to the supervisors?
No, there could be, because you were talking about maybe recommending some things directly to the board of supervisors.
Well, then I'd like to kind of redirect what I said earlier, because I do think that this response to the grand jury is sufficient. But I would like to somehow let the board of supervisors know that if they want to know what we think should be done.
We think it's working.
We think it's working. And that the, I, I wouldn't want our response to the grand jury to somehow telegraph a message to the board of supervisors that we think they need to implement these changes once they find the money. I don't think they need to.
Okay, well, that's what I'm saying, and maybe we need to make some modifications here.
Well, I'm happy with this response to the grand jury. I think it should satisfy them.
Okay.
But I would like to somehow let the board of supervisors know something a little more strongly worded, that, that we feel, that I at least, I'd be happy to discuss this with all of you. I feel, as Commissioner Baker said, this is a solution in search of a problem. I don't think the problem is there. I don't think the problem is that there's not enough public participation.
Okay.
The problem maybe is that the public doesn't care, but it's not our job to make them care. It's just our job to welcome if they do care.
Presumably, there'd be some kind of a transmittal menu, memo to the board, when we send.
Not, not usually, and this just goes through staff. I mean, this will go to Craig, and then he'll use this to draft a letter, because again, the supervisors have to respond to almost all these. If you looked at the grand jury, they didn't use to, now they say who they want responses from. They want it from the board, and the planning commission, or me, or whoever, so they go down the list. I could do that. So if you want to put something in here, we could do, I can prepare a cover memo to the board, because they, again, are going to get a copy of this, to say exactly that, is that the grand jury raised a lot of, several of the findings and recommendations dealt with public participation, and the lack, what they perceived as a lack of notification with public participation, and the lack, what they perceived as a lack of notification and, to the public, yeah, and that the commissioners have, um, believed that that's what their role is, is to, um, listen to the public, be available to the public, and welcome the public, but not necessarily is their duty to try to encourage the public.
Okay, and something that we got going out, if it, if it had broken, let's fix it, it was working.
That's right. Now, what she just said is what I was saying. Does anyone have different feelings about that issue?
Well, no, let's see, if we put that, we can break press and have a memo.
Sure we can.
Sure we can.
Yeah.
We can do anything we want, so.
We could.
I think what you said is, is on, almost.
I, I'm fine, we could wordsmith this all night, but I think the message Bev has is, is how I would agree.
And if you'd like, I could actually, I mean, this is the county standard format, but again, you're the planning commission, you're not a staff person responding. We could add, after the first sentence or paragraph to Judge Seggerstrom, is add that very paragraph as a general response, and then the following are, are responses to the specific findings and recommendations. And that might be the best place to put it, because I think it is important for the grand jury to know what your true feeling is, rather than trying to pigeonhole based upon the findings and recommendations, um, just generally, this, because this is the, the whole thrust, I thought, too, of their, uh, recommendation or their report, was you're not doing something they think you should be doing.
So do, do you think we need to go help you draft that, or are you thinking you have enough of a sense to draft it?
I think I know, and I, we, we don't have to have this in till the end of August. I could bring it back on the nineteenth, if you'd like, should look at it one more time, and.
That's an idea.
Yeah, and just specifically on that issue, not going through the whole thing.
You wouldn't go through it, but I, that way you could see, see that paragraph, we add a few other little changes that you directed this evening.
Oh, that makes sense.
Should we take a vote on it, on the document then, then, or tonight?
Um, I would appreciate if you'd vote on it tonight, uh, with the understanding